Open the April 5th meeting of the Hamilton Planning Board. And on the agenda tonight is continuation of 133 Essex Street special permit. And as I understand, Patrick, we're going to continue the stormwater hearing.
That is correct. Also, I know Robin Stein Town Council has told me before I should make sure everybody knows that we're being recorded, which we are.
Okay, before we begin, we'll take roll call. So, Richard.
Richard Boroff here.
Jonathan.
Jonathan Poor, present.
Arnie.
Arnie Crouch, present.
Amal.
Amal Dalquas, present.
Bill. Bill, you're on mute.
Bill Wheaton, present.
And Pat Norton.
Pat Norton, present.
And Rick Mitchell, present. And I'm sorry, Corey, I forgot. Corey?
W W, present.
Okay, I think that's everybody. So, we're going to continue the hearing on 133 Essex and Patrick, is there any introduction you want to make or?
Actually, we're continuing the stormwater management permit hearing on Zero Bridge Street. What we're first doing tonight is discussing a bond release request that has come to us from the Canterbury Brook Project folks. And that'll be the first item. So Jill had sent us a correspondence, I guess, a week or more ago. That has been revised today and I'll turn the floor over to Jill.
So, good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of Canterbury Brook Capital LLC, the developer for the project located off of Highland Street. Basically, we're here to request a return of a portion of the bond that is currently being held by the board. The amount of the bond currently being held is $63,000. I did send an amendment to the board and I can't put it up on the screen if that makes it better for the board to see it. Or not sure how you want to proceed.
I think you can just explain it.
Okay, sure thing. So essentially, we, we had submitted a request to reduce the bond. We submitted as is required an ASBIL plan showing that all of the infrastructure had been completed in substantial compliance with the approved plans that were approved by the board back in 2016. And then modified throughout time. And then Mr. Smith, in order to just confirm, you know, the situation, walk through the property, because there were a couple of things that he knew had to be done, had noted that some items had not been completed. For example, he had commissioned to have the sales trailer removed, but when that removal happened, the G C just simply didn't have sufficient time to regrade plant and do everything it was supposed to do. So when Larry gave me notice of that, I had actually asked him then to give me an estimate of the bond amounts. And that's what I delivered to you today. So there are a couple of things that still need to be done. They aren't related to the infrastructure, but they're still, you know, part of what the town wants to see completed. And those are to complete the plantings, to basically add some top soil and to spread it around. And honestly, to, there's some maintenance items that are just standard. Every time the winter ends, you need to do them. So trail maintenance for that open space trail. You know, updating, I shouldn't say updating, fixing the curb that the plows destroyed. And that was that bond that I had actually submitted to you. So basically to repair the curb, it was about $1,300. And then the other items, the landscaping and trail maintenance was about $6,000, a little under that. So the total bond amount that, you know, Mr. Smith was offering for the board to hold because it's only fair was about $9,000 and then amended his request to simply release $53,861. And that is basically our request. So I don't know if the board members have questions, if they, you know, had an opportunity to review the plan that was submitted by Meridian, who is the certifying engineer relative to the completion of the infrastructure. Any questions you may have, you know, Larry's here to answer them as well as Tom Schlosser, who is his onsite supervisor in connection with these completion of work over at Canterbury Brook. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board?
For me, it was pretty straightforward.
I have a question for Patrick. Patrick Refit. Was the town, was the town part of that inspection, that final inspection? And are you satisfied with the, the conditions satisfied?
I did look around and I did also confirm that there was some damage to the curb in. I did confirm that there were some landscape materials that needed to be replaced. Might be a few that are looking a little bit more anemic than what they should. So yeah, I think that there should be probably about this amount withheld to cover those items that need to be addressed.
I have a question. Marty, do you want to go first?
No, you go ahead, Jonathan.
Okay. Um, I don't know that much about the plans here because this was before my time. So I'm a little bit at a disadvantage here. But as I drive by, I just noticed that some of the trees along the street side look a little bit distressed. And I don't know which of those trees were part of the landscape plan. Is that part of this process? Did anybody look at the health of the street trees? Those are my questions.
That's part of what was submitted to us. That was in the statement.
And I can answer that, Jonathan.
There you go. I was going to ask Mr. Smith.
There's about, I would say 25% of the trees in the property are not on the plan and we added them to, to the construction process for a number of reasons. They look better. There's some landscape screening. Some of them have. But, but our plan is to go through every tree probably within the next month, do an entire walk of the property. And I believe that's part of the $9,000 being held back. To anything that's not in good health, just replace it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My, my comment or question was similar to Jonathan's. I do drive along Asbury Street frequently and I noticed last summer, maybe even before that, that several trees had died. And I don't know that they've actually been replaced. So I wasn't on the board when the landscape plan was approved for Canterbury Brook. But I wondered about the extent of the screening of the backs of the Canterbury Brook units along Asbury Street and whether the rear, rear portions of those buildings were to be thoroughly screened or not. And whether the trees, I know the dead trees have been removed, but I, I don't really know whether or not they've been replaced. It, it, the landscaping looks a rather Spartan. The farther north you go on Asbury Street, north and west you go on Asbury Street toward Peter Britton's property.
I could answer that, Marty. First of all, any tree that has died was replaced probably last, early last fall. But I believe this winter, there was also some that, you know, no more than two or three that have died. But all the trees that you see in the back of units were not part of the landscape plan. And those were just added on to give the unit owners additional screening. So if you look at the landscape plan itself, you will not see those trees that you're referring to on the plan. That's something we did as an extra benefit to the homeowners.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that was nice, Larry.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? So what's the amount that you want released, Jill?
So the request for release is $53,861.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to that affect that the board release $3,861?
I made the motion as a planning board release $53,861 for the surety of the surety bond for their Canterbury Brook development.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Corey?
W W, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amal?
Amal Dalquas, aye.
Marty?
Marty Crouch, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And once we complete, the other work will be before you and we will, you know, just go through the list of everything that we needed to complete. And at that time, you have questions, we'll address them as well. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, board members.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Are we moving on to 133 Essex?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jill, you want to introduce this topic?
Well, certainly. Thank you very much. Jill Mann here on behalf of Tobacco Hill Capital Partners. And if I may, I would very much like to ask if I may share my screen. Then I can just, I just have a presentation board just because it's easier to show you the slides that we had as a part of the submittal, if I may, Mr. Mitchell.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So here is the beginning of our presentation. I just want to, the overview is that we are going to do a team introduction. We're going to deliver to you artist illustrations, updated schematic designs, landscape rendering plans and details, you know, schematics of the architectural features of the actual planned units, a photometric plan demonstrating that there is no light bleed, and then photographic examples of completed developments that have been constructed on very ledgy areas. And then also, to the extent the board would like to engage to discuss the low impact development components of the project, which we've been working very hard to improve upon. I'm going to introduce the development team. Before we even do, I do want to just stress to the public that there's been into the board, there's been repeated criminal activity on the property. And by that, I mean people have stolen the trail cams that were installed. They have removed survey stakes, which everyone knows is a federal crime. They have actually gone on the property illegally and chainsawed trees and tried to do trail maintenance on a project. They are neither entitled to access nor have the right to bring heavy equipment into and do that type of work. I would just ask the public, please refrain from accessing the property and that another police report has been filed. I just want to let the board know because if anybody does go out there, you're going to see activity that absolutely nothing to do with the owner nor the applicant. So at this point, I will begin. So I just want to introduce our team. As you all know, applicants, the applicant is Tobacco Hill Capital Partners, Larry Smith and Julia Dickinson. We have this evening, our, our registered architect, Ken Fail from LaGrasse Yanowitz and Fail. We have our landscape architect, William Fleming from William Fleming and Associates. We have a lighting specialist, Carol Courtmanch from Illustrate. I, Jill Mann, from the Office of Man to Man. And then both of the owners, Kathy Rich Dival and Brian Rich were also in attendance this evening. Just a general overview, I always do it so everybody knows what it is. I'm not going to go through it. I think everybody understands what we're doing.
Sorry, I'm, I'm not sure if you know, I don't think anyone's seen, if you're going through slides right now, I'm not sure you're sharing.
You can't even see it?
No.
So I'm just going on and on for nothing, right?
No, it was good to hear you.
Oh my goodness. So, okay, so let's see. Share screen. I'm gonna try, okay, host disabled screen sharing. Let's see. I'm not being allowed to share.
Okay, who's got the control? Is that Patrick?
Yeah. There you go. Maybe try now. Sorry.
So I had a beautiful view of my own screen, by the way. Let's see. Ah, here we go. Perfect.
Okay.
Is it visible now? Can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Appreciate you letting me know, Mr. Norton.
Can you put it, can you put it into slide presentation? So
There you go.
There you go. Okay, good.
Yes. So we already have gone through that. We don't have to say it again. We already have gone through that. I just, I went over the general property characteristics. The board knows these. I always put them up because it's always good to remind the board what exactly we're doing, you know, relative to the contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust of 2.174, you know, recurring tax revenues of 700, one-time fees. And then we did, we do specify what approvals we've received to date. You know, the orders of condition have been issued. Yes, they have been appealed. Nonetheless, they're issued. And that means there's a presumption that the project has been approved under that particular standard. Now we are in appeal. Title V system has been approved. So that's where we stand. I do have some L I D features, but I think I'm going to go back to that afterward. But I will let you know that over the past few weeks, what we do now, now that we're, we have gone through, if you will, a hydrology and we understand where we're going to have ledge removal and how we're going to locate our units, we actually do a value engineering. And by that, I don't just mean saving the developer money, but as many, many of you know who are involved in projects, I mean, I know that a lot of you are, that you do value engineering, you look, you see what you can do to increase low impact development techniques. You see what you can do to impact, improve aesthetic aspects. And that's what we're doing now. And in fact, we've been working diligently to add certain low impact development techniques that'll show when we talk about the landscape plan. So for example, we're going to create, you know, impervious sidewalks. We're going to make our driveways paved. So not only does that increase the aesthetic component, but it also increases the amount of pervious area versus impervious areas, which is a very much sought after low impact development technique. So I'm going to go into our artist illustrations. So here's the artist illustration. And what the artist does is he takes our landscape plan essentially and draws it out. As you know, and Mr. Wheaton, you were a big mover of this, we had relocated our units. There used to be units where you see this ledge face in front. As a result of many of the board's suggestions, we moved the units to be 250 feet from the central line about back. And this is the view you would see. I know there were some consternation that this was a 50-year outbuild plan. These are not 50-year-old trees. If they were, they'd be 50 feet tall. This particular plan, Bill Fleming will give you an idea of how long it takes for having, to have this mature growth. Because you can't plant it this size. You have to plant and allow it to grow in, in order to ensure the plants will grow. And I think, I know Mr. Refit is also a landscape architect and maybe he'll have more detailed questions for Mr. Fleming. But this plan is probably somewhere between five years out. It really depends on the conditions. So anything within two years, the plants grow a lot. So here's your first approach. As you can see, you really can't see the development. I mean, it's pretty much obscured because of the planting and because of the fact that we're 250 feet back. Here's the approach coming view from the 2028 side. So if you're going from the less developed portion of Tobacco up toward Essex Street, this is what you see. You can't see anything because the units are so far back. And then here is the opposite view coming from Essex Street forward. And as you can see, you can see where the, where the split real fence is because we plan on putting in that split real fence and trying to maintain more of a, a low approach relative to the types of plantings. And to try and use more natural indigenous species. Here is a copy of the landscape rendering plan. And at this point, if it pleases the board and Mr. Mitchell, if I have relief to do this, I'm going to ask Mr. Fleming to unmute himself and to review the landscape rendering. For the purposes of the board, if I may, I just want to explain what the various types of color are. For anybody who's colorblind, I apologize. But basically, the dark green areas are undisturbed areas, areas that we are not going to touch. The brown areas are basically the trails. The gray areas are where we're going to have relief and we're putting in slopes. Also, that's, you can tell is the, is the actual roadway. The units are shown in beige. And then the lighter green areas are where we plan on replanting. And then you can see that the very light green areas, oh, I apologize. You can see that the very light green areas are actually, for lack of a better term, manicured landscape area. The areas outside are those areas that are going to be not manicured and left to basically go back to a natural state, but be taken care of. And then you can see that we have the rain gardens shown as well on the plan. And again, Mr. Fleming, if you can unmute yourself and basically introduce yourself to the board and explain your process. And then, you know, the board will most likely want to hear from you. And I do have, just so everyone knows, the next plan is just an uncolored plan. And then we just give some landscape details. And I do have a copy, Bill, of your planting material list, if and when you would like me to show that on the screen. Again, I turn it over to you, Bill.
Good evening. Bill Fleming from William Fleming Associates, the landscape architect for the project. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 I'm away and I'm on an iPhone. So I'm going to do my best to present this plan. As you all know, we're trying to have a landscape plan design concept to create a landscape that is visually appealing to the future residents of Tobacco Hill site while blending into the existing environment. The approach to the design starts with a native New England landscape into the site that utilizes deciduous shade trees and evergreen trees with flowering ornamental trees that have attractive massing. The selected shrubs that are planted within the entrance into the site have no, mature heights of no more than three feet tall, which is well below the eye level of vehicular drivers. So getting into and out of the site from a landscape perspective should be quite simple. But at the same time, we're trying to buffer that, that edge along the roadway, which I think we do a pretty good job of doing. For, for the, for the areas along the, all the proposed streets, the intent of the landscape is to create a formal New England tree-lined edge with native deciduous shade trees that leads the residents to vehicular and pedestrian entrance into and out of the site. Perimeter, we have added drifts of evergreen and deciduous trees to soften the resident to provide a, we have selected is native. The plant material has been selected for its, the site, its performance, their form, suburban durability, hardness, intestine performance. We are installing about 169 total evergreen trees, about 203 deciduous and ornamental trees, and about 205 deciduous and evergreen shrubs. So with an overall planting on the site of about 600 new plant materials, and that does include the foundation plantings to each unit, which includes one ornamental flowering tree and about 11 or so shrubs given, plus or minus, given the walkways, how they're going to each unit. We have used minimally grass sparingly. We're trying to use that in the back of curbs and where space allows for softer, more, more maintainable edge. And in some cases, for snow management areas. But other than that, I wouldn't be wanting to answer any questions in regards to the landscape plan that any of the board members may have.
So the dark green area is the do not, is the undisturbed area?
Correct. So the dark, the dark green is basically where you are not, we are trying to protect as much as possible. And basically, we're, that's the mature growth forest that we're trying to keep.
That was my question about, it looks like, if I look at the map, there's maybe at least 50 or 100 feet of mature forest between your new scalloped ledge area and wetland to the north and the west.
So we always maintain 100 feet from any dis, from any wetland to any disturbance, Mr. Wheaton? Always 100 feet?
Yeah.
I understand that, but I'm trying to understand how much of the green area is wetland or whether you really have 100 feet of forest before you get to the wetland?
You have 100 feet of forest before you get to the wetland. So
Moving, moving from the project outward.
I can, would you like me to maybe zoom in for you? Maybe it'd be easier to see. So this right here, Mr. Wheaton is the 100-foot buffer. Right here, this, this, I don't know, it's hatched with two dots. I never know what that's called. That's where the wetland is in this little area. Looks like a head to me. So you have this amount of area, which is 100 feet of forest area being maintained. And that's the same in this area. And then that's even more in this area because the wetland is right here with that line and the two dots. So, and then right here.
Okay. You're really going to be able to do all the blasting and the leveling and everything else and not disturb that area?
100%. That is our requirement. We are flagging and we will put up no disturb and it will be monitored pursuant to the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, which requires continuous onsite monitoring. And, and the Conservation Commission could come on at any point in time to ensure that we do not infringe on that line.
Jill, given that statement, can you show us on this drawing roughly where the blasting will be?
Of course. So I mean, basically, the blasting is going to be in these areas. It really and truly is going to be within the site almost everywhere in certain areas. It's, there are some areas that are filled. There are some areas that are blasted. But for example, to create this roadway, the entire roadway predominantly through here needs to be blasted. Here, there's some filling. Up in this areas, there is some filling. I don't have that blast plan, but we are going to be blasting a fair amount of the development area.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Bill, could you, could you mention, Bill Fleming, I'm sorry, the work that we've done in the retention and detention ponds? I think you, you didn't talk about that in your presentation.
Oh, you mean the rain gardens, etc.
Rain gardens, correct.
Yeah. So I'm going to just zoom in on them because I think it's helpful. So for the board's point, I apologize. I don't mean to step on your toes, Mr. Smith, but I just want to make sure. So with regard to the project, there are five rain gardens and one infiltration basin as part of the stormwater management plan. Rain gardens are a preferred method because they have enhanced, I guess, phosphorus removal. And that's what was said by Brent Cole. He can share more with you at another time. I'm not qualified to really go into much detail on those. But Mr. Fleming most certainly is able to tell you about the, the species that have been planted in there and how they'll grow. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, the, the plant materials that we've selected for the rain garden areas are, is specifically native. It needs to meet specific requirements from the state. And they are, they are, it's lethra, ilex verticillata, which is winter berry. We're using a river, a nigra birch and a, and some grasses and a New England, basically the bottom of the rain garden area is a New England erosion control and restoration grass, which will be seeded on the rain garden area is a New England erosion control and restoration grass, which will be seeded on the bottom. It's basically those fluctuations and that specific area. Um, I'll give you some of the grasses that are, it's wild Virginia wildry, creeping red fescue, soft rush, switchgrass, little blue stem, green bold grass, bull rush, New England aster, spotted joe pie weed, and blue vervary. Um, so all that grass come is, uh, all those grasses are native to New England and have been used in rain gardens uh throughout the state that I've.
And Bill, are they contained within your overall plant picks that I had actually delivered to the board?
Uh, tho- those grasses, no, but I can definitely uh get those. The plant picks that I've given the uh board are of the deciduous and deciduous shade trees and of um
Oh, I see.
Evergreen trees that we're, we are using. I might have, I think I might, yeah, the river birch is in there.
Yes.
Um, I think, yeah, no, the winter berry is.
The winter berry is.
Summer sweet is.
Right.
Yeah, I believe they all are, actually.
So I mean, they are all contained.
Except, except for the, the, the seed, the seed mixes, uh, I don't have um shown in that packet.
But that was also included in your package, just if you're interested in seeing what types of trees are actually going to be included. Um, here's the river birch tree. I mean, we are all very familiar, right? Being from New England, we all know what river birches, we see them a lot in various communities. So that's what this particular tree is, and that's what you use in, um. Bill, is it true you use those in the, um, the rain gardens because they are able to withstand, withstand very wet conditions?
Correct, correct.
Jill, could you?
I mean, everything that is, um, we have selected for those specific areas needs to uh deal with those types of soil, soil conditions because we are being, uh, we are treating uh rainwater in those areas. So obviously, river birch kind of gets its name from that, but all those plants um specifically are used in those type of situations.
Jill, excuse me, would you define what a rain garden is, please?
So a rain garden is, sure, it's a type of treatment. I mean, again, this is really a question for Brent Cole, but what it is, is it's a try, a type of treatment um basin that collects water from storm runoff. And then it, it basically treats the water that comes off of, for instance, the roadway. So any water that comes off the roadway is considered gray water or dirty water because you have cars running over them. It's not clean water. So it has to be treated before you're able to infiltrate or allow it to go back into the earth. And that's what a rain garden does, but it does it with various plant materials. And again, I, I'm going to have to defer to Brent, but if you remember, he was not able to make this meeting. So any follow-up questions relative to storm, I will have to pass on to him and I can assure you that we will give you detailed responses. But that is a general response relative to what a rain garden is.
Thank you. That's a good, that's good. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Fleming, I, I have a question about uh the plan for irrigation to establish all this planting, what, what, was there going to be a irrigation system that's used to establish or is, is that going to be done manually?
I could, I could answer that. There, there's an irrigation system for the common area trees. Um, and the lawns, um, there is not an irrigation system though for the rain gardens, that's all natural.
And that water is taking, is that town water supply or is that from a well or how is that water?
That's a, that's a well. There's, there's one well for irrigation.
And that's just for establishing or do you intend then this to be irrigation throughout? Obviously, there's water ban, pretty much a water ban pretty consistently now.
Yeah, we comply. But we comply with the water ban, but to establish trees um that are on this plan will require an irrigation system, but it is planned to be used in the future as well.
Yeah, so Patrick's question is if we're going to use it just to establish, so we use it for two years and then abandon, but that is not the case. You use it to establish and then you will continue to use it in perpetuity for the benefit of the, the landscaping. That's, that's, is that accurate, Mr. Smith?
That, that's correct.
Does that answer the question, Mr. Morton?
Does, yeah. Um, I, I don't know if there's a design for that system that's been, maybe not yet, huh? Probably not yet. It, the, the other question was gonna be with regards to soil and whether or not the plan would be to uh test and treat soil that's used during the excavation process and, and reuse that? Or is it intended to bring in new, new soil? And if there is approximately.
Uh, there, there, I mean, there will be new soil being brought into the site. Uh, but we're basically getting, once we get to grade, you know, it really depends on uh the conditions of each, but basically, we are, every tree gets new soil uh planted around it and uh wi- with it into the new spots. So in lawn, in lawn areas, there will probably, where we need it, uh, there's probably four inches of loam to six inches of loam that will be new. Um, so I, that, I hope that answers your question. I, I, you know, you really don't know those type of things until you get into the site.
Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I guess we can move on.
Um, Rick, um, I guess I was a little slow. I wanted to ask William, of the planting list, how many um are not indigenous? And what was your uh approach in picking plants that may have not been indigenous to the area?
Okay, uh, very good question. So the ones that I like, um, specifically, um, so-called not from this area are used in this area quite frequently. Um, but a majority of the plant list is native to the area. Uh, as you know, we're going, uh, a lot of these, unfortunately, a lot of na- native plant species right now in New England are, uh, for lack of a better term, under attack from all sorts of different problems. Um, our plant list by the year kind of gets uh shrunk on which kind of new, new bug attacks a tree, new insect attacks certain trees. Uh, basically, we try to use plant material that strives. I mean, I've done multiple landscapes within Massachusetts. And we kind of go back to ones that are kind of uh the least problematic to say, uh, to be the best term for that. Um, so that's our kind of list and our kind of mentality of how we go about selection is site-specific. Um, and for basically hardness, durability and survivability, you know, um. Luckily enough, the Elms are starting to either, you know, uh, they used to be having a big problem. Now there's um problems with red maples. I mean, we can go. Each unfortunately, tree has some kind of pest that can, can uh infect it. But we try to pick the most uh hardiest ones for the, for this region.
Thank you, that's helpful.
One thing I'd like to add as well, um, the water feature uh on the cul-de-sac uh in the back of the community, there is a um highly landscaped water feature with uh built-in benches and things. That becomes a focal point for s- socialization, uh, days like today, by the way. Um, and that same water feature and the surrounding, um, is also a Canterbury in their cul-de-sac. If anybody uh has an interest to take a look at it.
Any questions? Okay, I think you can move on, Jill.
Thank you very much. Um, so our next, um, where I talk about that. Our next segment would be to review the architectural schematics of, of the project. So I mean, this is probably one of the more um exciting aesthetically um demanding aspects of the project. So what are the buildings going to look like? And I can recall when we did Canterbury, you know, there's a lot of focus made on alternating, you know, garage door styles and styles of homes, which is something that Mr. um Smith has already worked into his plan. And here this evening is Ken Fail. Um, again, I don't include it in my PowerPoint, but if I may, Mr. Fail is going to share his screen because i- it's a huge PowerPoint with all of the different um architectural renderings. So um i- if it's possible, Ken, um, I think you probably can share your screen.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Ken File with L Y F Architects. And uh, we've, the architect for uh, for this project. And uh, we'd like to kind of walk through the uh, the duplex and building designs. So um, I'll go ahead and get started. Um, the entire site is made up of a combination of two main units, uh, the Coolidge, which is a one-level unit, and the Essex, which is a two-level unit with all essential living spaces located on the main entry level. Um, the kitchen, master bedroom, master bath, living, dining and laundry. So on the screen, as you can see, on the left-hand side will be the Coolidge. And on the right-hand side would be the Essex. Um, with the second level of the Essex having a loft and second bedroom and bathroom on the upper level. I'm gonna go back to the main level here. Um, the, the developer will modify the floor plans specifically upon request for buyers. This is, this is actually called a non-standard option and has been done consistently through Restoration Capitals Developments on the North Shore. Um, in other communities, the developer has made plan modifications um as requested by buyers that have additional mobility assistance needs and has made those desired accommodations uh upon their request. In our plans, we have designed that all passage doors are three foot wide through the units. And both units come with an option uh to provide a future ramp access to the front door um as requested by the buyer or to be put in at a future date. Um, the first floor, um, the first floor, all the living areas have tall ten-foot ceilings. I'm gonna go to the elevations real quick. Um, we have ten-foot ceilings, um, which we, that ends up being eleven-foot floor-to-floor. And we have tall windows with transoms above. Um, the buyer does have an option to uh put in a sunroom or screened porches. And I will, that's gonna be at the very end of the presentation. Um, here is the sunroom option. And then there's also a scre- a sunroom option as well. I'll go back to the, the building elevations. Fresh of the floor plan. Um, the units will be energy efficient. Um, this, the homes are gonna be sealed using an arrow barrel, an arrow barrier, excuse my, eh, my tongue, technique and insulated with closed cell foam um from the basement sill plate to the peak of the roof. So we're gonna basically encapsulate the entire building, the entirety of structure. It's good, this is a term called a hot roof, when you actually put the closed cell foam uptight to the underside of the uh, the roof deck. Um, this creates minimal air leakage and a higher R-values for the entire building. Um, each of the units will get an electric car charging station as a standard feature at no cost to the buyer as part of the project. Um, hers ratings will be done for each of the units. And there, the goal is to target the high forties, which is consistent with the developers' other community developments. And it's one of the most energy-efficient design condominiums in New England. Um, as per um, um, the, uh, the developer's energy consultant. We are putting in energy recovery units um to provide fresh air makeup for each unit. Because if the building is so tight that we need to introduce um this energy-efficient feature. The, we'll have ninety-eight AFUE variable-speed furnaces and ninety-eight AFUE tankless hot water heaters. These are probably um energy-efficient hot water um uses. Um, and we use a standard home, uh, smart home interface technology that controls the tankless hot water systems, smoke detectors, COU detectors, garage door openers and thermostats. Um, and a lot of water conservation um features that we'll be including are low, low-flow water fixtures. Um, like the, including like Kohler High Line Comfort Height, Single Flush and Dual Flush uh toilets, uh, which use between one and one point one to one point six gallons per flush. And the Kohler Purist and Honesty Single Handle Bathroom Sink faucets, which are also um, both limit flows to one point two gallons per minute. Overall, the site has a diversity of configurations that provide a, that provides a design richness to the community. Um, and as per the site plan, we have an Essex Essex combination, an Essex medium-sized with an Essex small. Um, we have a Coolidge with a front entry garage and an Essex. We have a Coolidge side entry garage with an Essex, and we also have mirrors of those units, as well as an Essex single, single unit and a Coolidge single unit. So it provides a variety and richness to the site. Um, and a lot of attention has been given to giving variety to the exterior finishes, combinations to the community. And we've developed a, a whole matrix that provides the style and color of the garage door, the siding scheme, which has side cedar shakes, vertical siding and lap siding, both on the front and side as well as the rear. Um, there are brackets and we change front door styles. And then there's also options to put selective stone accents and metal roof accents. And there's gonna be five um units that are gonna be done initially, but these will also be options that unit orders can select themselves. Um, again, the um, the siding is or maintenance-free, high-grade vinyl siding that'll have a combination of textures of the cedar shake, the board and bat and clapboard siding. And uh, again, that creates visual interest, um, not just in color, but also in texture as well. Um, and as part of the accessibility to the site also, that the site does have um curb cut crossing, curb, handicapped curb cuts at the uh, at the sidewalk, road crossings. Um, I will briefly go to here are the elevations for the buildings. You can see that the Coolidge is a um, a single story. And then we also have a two-story Essex. And we, again, we have decorative columns at the entries. And um, and you can see, you can see the visuals, um, variety of the siding materials. And again, we, our whole package shows the combination of units. Um, I won't, this is a Coolidge Essex with a side entry garage. So again, it all essentially the same unit. But again, it's a complete package here.
Can I ask a question? If, if so much of this land is ledge, how do you provide a, what looks like almost a full footprint basement?
That is, it's all part of the grading, it, it, it's all part of the, the grading plan and how the site is graded.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have the site plan in front of me. I can, uh, but.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to answer any questions. That was the end of my presentation, so.
You have any uh renderings of the color scheme?
Um, I don't have renderings, but we, we do have photographs, Jill, I think that you have coming up later in the presentation. And we do have, um, there are examples of the, uh, let me get this to full size. We do have, I don't have renderings of each of the buildings and different color combinations, but we do have we did show the color combinations, the selections that are, that are um selected for this, for this project.
So basically, throughout the submittal, what we tried to do was give you an indication of what could be a combination. Um, because the homeowner is allowed to choose, number one. Number two, they don't, the way Larry will structure it and the way Ken will recommend is that, you know, you don't have the same um, color, I mean, Larry, you can speak to this better than I, but then you won't have the same color palette. You won't have the same garage doors, you won't have the same entrance doors in the two different buildings. Um, you know, and also the way they've worked it is they've sprinkled the small, medium and average size units um around the, around the project so that, you know, we address that requirement of the bylaw to provide the variable. around the, around the project so that, you know, we address that requirement of the bylaw to provide the various, various sizes. And then also I, I think, you know, Ken basically said it to break up the visual impact. So you, you, by changing the texture, right? And by changing sizes and colors, you, you provide more interest. And that's what we've done, but we didn't give you a rendering showing the various colors because it, I guess we could have. It would just be maybe, I, I, there isn't any set scheme. It's about what people would choose.
We, we made the suggestions in our, in the chart that I have attached above the screen right now and it's you know, we took great care in making the selections, the proposed selections based on the site plan to make sure that there was that visual interest and variety to the site.
I think that's good because I've seen a lot of places that they, they'll have like 10, 20, 30 units and they all look the same and it is very extremely sterile.
Yes, it is. I totally agree with you.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got a question. Just kind of a side question first, your choice of insulation on the buildings, you're essentially gonna wrap it in foam, you said?
Yes.
You know, that's the least environmentally sensitive product to use going forward.
Well, again, that it, it's a choice that we can, we can certainly revisit.
I'm just asking a question, why you chose it. But anyway, I'd like to get back to the
I could answer that, Emile, if you don't mind. So we're, we're, we're trying to get down to a hers rating in the high forties. Yeah. So to do that, there's a number of considerations, but the biggest is really to put the arrow barrier in. Right. Which seals every nook and cranny when it's, when the unit's a shell. And then we use closed cell insulation on top of that, which gives you an R seven per inch, which really makes these homes energy efficient.
Yeah, you're pretty much obliged to do that, but in the code. I mean, that's, that's an automatic.
Oh, no, this, this is way above the code. The code is, is just a cellulose that you could put in and sometimes even bat. This is, this is many levels above the code.
Well, I, we don't need to get into that. I, I'm not sure we should be in that, this level of detail on it, but I do have a comment about the aging in place aspect to this. Yeah, I, I can see the ramps that are proposed that gets you up to the porch. Then what happens? You got probably six, seven inch step to get into the house. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's gonna be a flush entry.
Yeah, your drawing show about a six or seven inch change in elevation there, but
Alright, there, there's a flush patio right here. That's
You can see that six inch, well, you can see the six inch step right there. You can see where your deck is. It's right at the bottom of your railing post. Right there.
Oh yeah, my apologies. Yep.
Okay.
We can make that modification.
Well, the other question is what, how many of these buildings are actually ADA compliant or handicap accessible on the interior of the building? Are any of these?
No, it, that'd be something that'd be done upon request. I always, as you can see, like the toilet, the toy compartments are not. But you know, based on a tenant, a potential buyer's request, they may not need full accessibility, right? It may just need, oh, could you put additional grab bars in for helping for certain situations? And if, you know, again, if something needs to be more opened wider to allow accessibility, then certain modifications then could happen to the units.
But yeah, I mean, some of them are gonna involve changing your corridor width because you need, as you know, you need a certain clearance off the lap side of the door to have access, depending on which way the door swings. So your corridors that look like they're about 40 inches wide, we'd have to go up much wider. That would be a hard modification to make later. So I guess you would have to do it at the beginning.
Well, the duplex, essentially duplexes don't have to meet M A B or ADA requirements.
Yeah, I know. I just talking about ages and aging in place. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about compliance, but yeah.
Okay. And if I could, if I could also mention every internal door except for that one bathroom door is 36 inches. 36 inches wide by seven feet tall.
They, they all measure, they all measure 32 inches, Mr. Smith. I just took a scale on it. I printed out the drawing, so. 36.
Well, the intent, the intent is 36, so I apologize if my draftsman missed that, so.
Yeah.
I could, I could promise you there'll be 36 inches.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All our Canterbury, all our Canterbury interior doors are 36 inches.
Okay. I'm just curious, Mr. File, were you part, did you participate in the overall layout of the buildings or was that mostly?
That was site planning. I was not.
You were not, okay. I just, just one comment. Can you tell us what, if someone were to look at this group of buildings, what would you say to them in, in terms of how this is unique to Hamilton or maybe how, how would this be unique to the North Shore or even New England? Is that something you could comment on?
Well, I would say this is a New England style architecture. At the end of the day, it's a craftsman style. I feel that it, it has the elements of New England. It's got, you know, dormers and pitched roofs and, you know, the, the tall windows, the higher ceilings. You know, the shaker stot, the, the, the cedar side, the, sorry, the shake siding and clap, clapboard siding. Yeah. Those are all the elements of a New England architecture.
So you, you didn't think it would be significant to maybe do drive through town and look at some significant heritage buildings, for example, and take some inspiration from some of those. Let me ask, I'll ask another question. The, was your charge on this to build, it looks to me honestly like a single building that was designed and then repeated 50 times with some minor changes to size. But essentially the same detailing, the color changes, but was that the charge that you had to in this case?
There's a single building. I mean, essentially we have two units that we've made different combinations thereof. There are modifications to them. Not, you know, uniqueness of the building does, does come through, you know, certain detail elements and mirror flipping, location of of garage doors and material finishes.
Okay, I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what you're saying is it's not gonna look just, even though the black and whites may look very similar, Mr. Dalquist, they're not gonna be very similar. If that makes sense.
Well, I think so. So Ken, maybe it'd be, if, I think Mr. Boris trying to find out is like, so you have options, like what you're showing here is just three styles, two with front entrance and one with the side. But are there other things? Is it one unit repeated? You know, to Mr. Dalquist's point is, you know, the intent is to kind of try and differentiate buildings. And how do you do that? You know, you have side entrances, you have two stories, you have one, you know, that kind of thing, the, the unit differentiations.
Actually, actually Jill, I think I, I, I'm comfortable with what he said. It sounds like he is differentiating. That's, that's what I was trying to point out.
Well, one of the, one of the key, one of the key things is to, how does this relate to the neighborhood, for example, and that's, that's what brought about the, the question on my part. There's a similarity or sameness to all these buildings, I think. With the roof pitches, with the same materials, the, there is a change in color, but that's a repetitive change. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind what's being done.
So, so I think I can, so the rationale is to create a cohesive development, but with not with a single, with a single appeal in front. It is to do that. Cause all of the area, these homes in this area, you, you've got homes that were built in the 1930s. So you have salt boxes. You have some of the homes, I mean, they're very varied. There's like right across the street, you have some modern homes, you have some colonial homes. You have, you know, the, the single story, smaller homes, you have
Right. There, there's a lot of variety. That's correct.
There's a huge, I mean, isn't it? It's amazing when you walk around the neighborhood. There's, it's exceptionally diverse. And the intent here though is to create more of a, it is supposed to be in your neighborhood feel with the same aspects, but we do want the board's input because it's very important to us that you see that we're trying to make it an interesting development though. So when you walk through, you don't go, dear Lord, it looks like row houses. That's not what we want and, and, and we, we know that's not what this board wants.
Well, I'm not asking you to change anything, so.
Oh no, but I mean, any kind of commentary you have, I mean, we've done it before. We, we appreciate, we truly appreciate input.
I think the way you've explained, it's, it's not gonna look like a bunch of row houses. You've got a lot of variety in there that you're gonna incorporate.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions, comments?
Just a couple of questions. So the sustainability features, you mentioned a couple. I kind of picked up a little bit on what Emile was talking about with the high VOC materials and things like that. Is there any, I guess, is this the sustainability conversation time or is it, is there another time where maybe that could be separate on the agenda to talk about the features in general, the development and, you know, water usage, energy, solar opportunities, a lot of roof on the site, obviously is. There's been any studies about, you know, you know, the, the, the development itself and is if there, is there any opportunity to certify any level of sustainability in the build? Both through the construction methods and ultimate performance of the buildings.
So Larry, that's, that's, you know,
Performance of the building, I, I believe, you know, trying to get that hers rating as low as possible. We have an energy consultant and we do blower door tests. We're trying to think ahead in the future and every garage door bay will have an electric vehicle rough hookup, which means a 50 amp circuit. 200, 220 volt 50 amp circuit in each of the base, not just one in the garage. So there's, there's a lot going into it. And we're always gonna try to get better as, as our energy consultant works with us, but the, but the blower door test at the end of, which, which is code, which we have to supply the hers rating certificate to the building inspector. But we, we literally blow away the, the code requirements because of the extra things we're doing in making these units tighter with energy recovery units because they're so tight, you need an energy recovery unit to bring in fresh air. And we're, and we are investigating solar options, but I can't say we're right now that that's something we're gonna offer at this point in time, but we are looking into it.
I have a minor construction question. I understand there's quite a bit of synthetic siding and trim in these designs and one of the challenges often in construction is managing the dust from cutting the plastic because it creates a static charge. It's really hard to collect. It's really hard to manage. Any thoughts on that?
Is Tom Schlosser with us tonight? I think Tom might have. He was here earlier. I know we have not had problems in the past with that Jonathan, but I, I, I don't, but we could get back to you on exactly how we handle that, that process.
Minor question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question. Of the 50 units on the site, how many of the units actually have the garage doors on the side of the building as opposed to the front of the building?
I think we should probably share a screen Larry so that we can explain.
I'm gonna stop sharing and Jill, if you put your, if you put your landscape plan up again for your PowerPoint, that will show it clearly.
You ready? Okay. Oh wait, I have to share. Okay, one second. So, so, I apologize, Miss Crouch, I'm, I'm all over the place. So you can see from the driveway entrances that the first six units are front entrance, the unit 35 is side entrance. And these are changing somewhat, I have to tell you, because we are doing some work. But because we're doing that value engineering, eight is side, so it's one, two, three. Larry, only three? I, I thought there were four.
And actually the, the sing, the single family Coolidge is like one in 34. Although they do enter from the side, they do enter from the front, but it's really a side entry from the way the unit is orientated. But the other piece of that is a side entry garage, as we go through our L I D analysis, a side entry garage takes up more pavement. So as we're trying to decrease some previous services, that's one of the reasons we have fewer side entry garages.
And, and if I may, just because we're back on this, Mr. Norton, you did ask for water conservation measures, et cetera. That is one of the reasons why we try to shrink the amount of lawn so that we don't have to irrigate because when you see these darker green areas, they're, they're try, they, we try to let those go natural and then you don't need the heavy water use and a lot of the species, I believe, Mr. Fleming can address it, but a lot of the species we try to use are those that are more drought tolerant in order to address that water concern. And then as Mr. Fail File had indicated as well, we use, as does everyone now, because you know, quite frankly, the code requires you to. Everything is water conservation and all of the fixtures are low flow and low use. If you have more questions about that, we can answer those, but I wanted to make sure we addressed that as well, Mr. Norton. So Ms. Crouch, as you can see, those are the numbers of, of the side entrance garages. I don't know if you would like to see something else relative to that?
Well, I, I, I would, I think my comment is that when you look at condo developments like Canterbury Brook and Patton Ridge and the, the development in Wenham, other than the boulders, I think the common feature of all of those projects is that the, the garage doors are on the, are at the front of the building. And that is really not consistent with any type of New England architecture from the past, you know, prior to the ubiquity of the automobile. But I do, just for your edification, point to the boulders in Wenham where the garages are clustered behind the unit, so they're not as prominent and there actually is more of a village feel because of that. Their front porches and that, but the garages themselves are separated from the building slightly and then positioned more to the rear of the site than prominently situated in, in the very front of the building. So I, regardless of, of the style that you categorize this as craftsmen or whatever, I actually think of it more as just condo style because you have the garage in front and it's very, very prominent. And of course it's most convenient, I can't deny that, but I just make that observation.
I, I'm gonna make an observation that I live in a standalone house and most of the, and all the properties around me are the same thing and pretty much, I don't know of any side garages in my neighborhood or any other neighborhood that I walk. I'll start looking for them, but I don't see that as a problem.
And, and if I could add, Marty, we've, we've gone through great lengths to choose a, a high quality garage door, that by the way, has an installation factor as well. But the textures of the garage door are kind of wood textures. And we have a mahogany type look. It's not a mahogany door, but it's mahogany and two other type of woods. So we, we plan to use the same door that was used at Canterbury Brook Garage Door.
Well, I appreciate that and I do, I have noted that the garage doors on your unit are significantly better looking than the garage doors on my house, so I'll grant you that.
That's a good thing.
Well, we'll take that as an absolute compliment. Thank you.
Larry, I have a question and it relates back to the energy efficiency and I understand you're, you're looking to make them as energy efficient as possible. Given that we're, you know, facing serious issues relative to fossil fuel. Given that we're uh, you know, facing serious issues relative to fossil fuels. Have you thought about um, using heat pumps as uh, for air conditioning and heating as opposed to fossil fuel gas?
So the way we approach that today is that the tighter and more energy efficient we can make the units. The smaller and the least amount of fossil fuels that could be utilized. I think our our buyers, um, the demographic that we sell to appreciate. Gas fireplace, they appreciate a gas stove and they, I don't know if they appreciate gas heat, as long as the heat works. Uh, so we have not looked at that, Rick, to answer your question. But what we believe is the tighter and more energy efficient we can make the units, the least amount of energy that could be used. And I could give you, this, this is a very high level example. People that typically move into our units, um, you know, they leave homes that were built in the seventies, eighties and nineties. Larger homes typically, but they tell us, and this is not scientific, but they tell us their heating and cooling, their heating and electric bills. Are sixty to seventy percent less in one of our units than from the inefficient homes they came from.
Okay, thank you.
It's still true that the ultimate solution to climate change is the all electric house. Just as the all electric cars. And it's certainly possible if their units are small and energy efficient, even with New England winters. Uh, you know, heat pumps. Can be driven by solar from the grid. And I mean, the other thing is um, you can have convection stoves and ovens now that are. Chefs say are actually better than gas and that also um, saves a lot on um, release of methane and CO2. The all electric house is coming back.
I grew up in an all electric house in the seventies. I did, my family.
Right, yeah, they had resistance heating and they were, they were not very energy eff- energy.
Other questions? Okay, do you want to move on, Jill?
You're muted, Jill.
Sorry about that, um, after.
You should not hear you muted.
You can hear me now.
Yes, yes.
Um, so so at this point, we would like to present to you our our photometric plan. Um, and that basically is just to demonstrate that we don't have light bleed. So a big concern is always that we don't shed light off the property. And that's what this next um, segment is about. Um, I apologize, let me see, so Carol, um, are you available? And I can share my screen to show the photometric plans and the reason why I'm using. Not using PowerPoint is because you, it does not, it didn't allow me to show you the colors as well and then to zoom in either that well. So basically, I'm going to show you the front and we're going to migrate back.
Yeah, Jill, I think that's the old plan, that still shows the two units up front.
Oh, it does, that's my fault, one second, okay. I think, remember, we had so many plans delivered. I mean, is Carol on as well?
I I am here, Jill, do you want me to send or share the latest one?
Um, oh, you, oh, sure, you know what, you're the one who's going to give the presentation versus me now trying to struggle, please do. Um, I'm no longer sharing, so up to you.
Okay, hold on. All right, I usually use Teams, so someone help me out with the.
If you just go to the bottom of your screen, there's a bar, it says share screen, it's green.
Perfect, okay. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Not yet, right.
So when you go to share screen, you you see, um, I have, you do now, yes.
There we go, okay. Right, so this is the, this is the plan here. Um, the idea was to design the lighting so that there is no light bleed um, from the property. And so as you can see here, this is the property line here. Um, the zeros represent the foot candle levels. And so as you can see around the property, uh, we still have zero. So there's no, there's still a lot of no light coming out of the um, design fixtures. As you get into the property, on the road, numbers go up. So that means that the foot candles have increased because the fixtures are lined up. So all of these.
Could you just show them where the, where the uh, light fixtures located?
Sure, so that, so the, there is one of the fixtures. So the great thing about LED is that it's a, it's a technology, so you can direct the light where you want it to go. So the different, I'm gonna actually go down, hold on. The different symbols here, so we have A, B, F and G, they all have different um, optics for the fixtures. Okay, so this one here, we have a B here, so that is a, I believe that's a type four forward throw. Okay, so we're basically putting all of the optics into the light here. Question towards me, okay, all right. So as you can see, you know, most of the light is directed towards the road here, okay? So all of the higher numbers that you see is the foot candle levels in the road area there. And as we get further out to the property, all of the zeros are demonstrating that there is no light spill um, outside of the property line. It's hard to see actually, but you know, if you zoom in, you can see the different, the different details. On the fixture locations, so here's another one here. As we just kind of move, meander on around here, they get higher.
You're locating these lights along the way to light the right of way.
Yes, exactly, right. So so the, there's another here, there's another fixture of the the B optic there. Then we kind of move along here. Um, so the idea was basically to, you know, to to give light to see where you're going. And then, you know, cut it off, off the property line.
And can you show?
Are those lamp lamps that you're showing, um, or are those bollards or what are those fixture?
So those are, sure, yeah, let me get to the.
They are sixteen foot tall poles, Mr. Mitchell, I believe. And um, we did, Carol's gonna get, show you the, here we go.
Okay, so this is the light fixture that was, that was picked, um, they are on sixteen foot poles. And um, and that, you know, the the diameter of the fixture, I believe, is twenty-one inches. Um, and then we have, I believe it's four different optics that we chose for this property. Um, specifically just to target the, you know, the no light spell for the property. Any other questions on the layout that I had there?
Carol, could you show the post?
Go up here, um, so you know, the the reason that we chose this fixture was, you know, as I was hearing the idea of the community. Um, we went with a modern classic look. And um, you know, we've done other properties like this and this is actually come out really nice. So this is the um, the pendant that it hangs from. Then this is the post and this is the um, base that it will go on. So it's a decorative ace with a pole and then there's the pendant and then the fixture that attaches to the pendant on the pole. Go down here, does that make sense to everyone? Any questions on the fixture or?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, um, if I may, the. With um, I was interested, I, I took a look at what would happen on the site as you enter off Chewbacca Road. As you go up the ramp to the high point, you have literally about six lights spaced apart by maybe sixty feet or so. As you go up the incline. One of the concerns I had there was uh, you've, you've talked about the uh, the zero point zero, which is the light trespass. But there's another issue there I want to talk with you about.
Is that, is right here?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
You have a parking lot, uh, light lamp there for illumination. And then you have one right across the the way, then you have a couple of B fixtures, those are all sixteen feet high. If you look at the incline and then you add sixteen feet to the elevation where roughly each one of those is located along that road. You're actually in every case looking up under the lamps. And one of the issues that, and um. In doing a, just a quick drawing to see what each one of those might be going up the hill, there is uh. The light cutoff seems to be about eighty degrees, eighty-four, eighty-two degrees going up. Um, I tried to find somewhere and actually call the manufacturer because I was curious about it. Uh, I don't know if you have the information, what is the cutoff uh, angle on those lamps? They're pretty close to the bottom of, on the luminaire, they're pretty close to the bottom of the fixture.
I actually don't know that, yeah, off the top of my head, I can, I can definitely find out for you though.
Yeah, it's in the eighty, it's in the eighty degree range, but so my, my concern there is glare. Because you've dealt with the, the light trespass where across is the property line. But when you get in the eighty and nine, ninety percent range, that is off the center line of the fixture, eighty degrees out. You're gonna be looking at the bottom of six lighting poles going up the hill in that eighty percent plus range. And uh, at LED lamps. And the bottom of that, so glare is, I'm just curious about whether you did any kind of study on what the glare would be. From those traveling along the road. Sixteen feet is pretty high for, um, I know there's a balance between the spacing on these and the height. But the higher you go, the more of an issue it becomes, I think. And uh, are you using any bollards on this site for low level lighting for, say, sidewalk lighting or?
No, we 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 just, we stuck with the um, with the posts and the fixtures, um, you know. There is definitely a, you know, a science to, you know, the the height of the poles and then the the foot candles. And trying to keep everything off of the, you know, of the property or on the property line, I should say. But, you know, we really, we did do separate optics on this um, to design it. Specifically to this, you know, if if you're concerned about that, and I will actually ask the manufacturer, what, or the person that designed this, what the cutoff is. Um, but we can, you know, we can, you know, move everything, you know, lower if necessary and redesign it. It's just up to.
I'm not asking you to do that, but uh, the um. What I did like is it looks like all of these, and you can verify, all these lamps are, the color is uh, three thousand K.
Yes.
That's, that is a good choice, so you get rid of the blue light, which is not good for.
Yeah, residential, um, we seem to be moving more into the warmer temperatures specifically. Because now we can do a lot more with the LEDs at this point.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I will, I'll find out for you on the cutoff on those fixtures and um, get back to Larry.
Thank you.
I did want to ask the question uh, relating to the sixteen foot height. If uh, it, that seems like it may be a little bit imposing to me. I would think that something twelve-ish might be a little bit more, less imposing. Uh, but you know, that's a subjective thought on my part, there may be a reason why. You know.
Yeah, so, so a lot of, oh, sorry. A lot of times, we, if we, if we got, like, it's surprising how much of a difference two feet on a photometric lighting plan can make. Um, especially with with these, you know, with these neighborhoods like this. So sometimes if we have to reach more, um, you know, like more, if we're trying to use as little fixtures as possible. Then we have to go up a little higher to spread the light out and then use the different optics to um, you know, to push it in in different directions. Um, so when we're trying to use less light, when you have a, um, when you have a bigger pole, we'll spread it out a little bit more. Um, and then when you do the, you know, when you, when you bring it down two more feet, then you get more of a hotspot. And, you know, in certain areas and it will be like just kind of a blob of light, um, rather than spreading it out and diffusing it.
I did uh, trace the lit areas on one of the uh, your photometric maps. And and it was very clear that you were uh, working to focus the lighting on the roadway. Which is also the main pedestrian area for the residents there. And um, really outside of that, there's no lighting at all, which I think makes for a a good fit into the rest of the neighborhood there.
Yeah, we really, we really just tried to go with the specifications of um, of the project and so. You know, I hope it works, but you know, any changes that need to be made, you just let me know.
Well, I I have another, another question for you, is, does this take under consideration the senior population in terms of your lighting level? I mean, I'm looking at your foot candle and it's in a two point seven, two point eight range directly under the fixture. Is that adequate for um, elderly population?
Yeah, that, that is, that is, that is right in line with that, um, you know.
All right.
Even like in, in like low, you know, in in regular residential neighborhoods, it's sometimes like two point two. So this is, this is enough light for them to definitely stay throughout the evening.
What would be the equivalent uh, uh, numbers for like some of the older streets that were, the houses were born forty, fifty, sixty years ago?
So it's, it's. Yeah, so those ones are probably, they're probably, you know, need to upgrade, I would think. Um, so they're probably just about, I would say, point one. Um, because there wasn't, there weren't many poles and um, they just didn't push out a lot of light in the older neighborhoods. So, you know, right now, point one is like as low as you can go. Um, you know, point two is a lot of the minimums that um, that the IAS standard is.
Okay. If we, if, this is, this is sort of an oddball question, but are there any streets that you can recommend that we could go look at at night? To see what point two means, I mean, that doesn't mean anything to me. Me to people may mean something to people like Amel, who's a, uh, an architect, but the most, the rest of us are laypeople.
Hmm, well, you know, I could, I could actually send some documentation, I mean, I I have a, I have a lighting meter because I'm a lighting person. So I actually go around and and measure foot candle levels, um, but yeah, I could, I could probably give you an idea and take a picture. Of a point two reading, if that would help.
Yeah, as long as it, you know, it's not inconvenient or anything difficult to do, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can do that, absolutely, I could probably do it right outside my, my road right now.
Super.
I've got one more question on lighting and it actually pertains to, is there any lighting on the buildings themselves that shine out? In other words, uh, and this not, might not be your, um, you may not have the answer to this, um, this court homage. But uh, I'm thinking of floodlights, I'm thinking of whatever, that where the people, are there any lights, uh, Jill? And maybe Mr. File, if he's still here.
Yeah, that was not me, um, I didn't do anything.
Question about lights, floodlights that are not protected, there's no shield on it.
I can answer that.
Okay, no problem, Larry, go ahead.
There, there are no floodlights on the building at all. Uh, the only lights are underneath the garage soffit. There's these lights and there's a, a light or two, depending upon the style unit, on the soffits. That go from, uh, that follow the sidewalk.
Yeah.
On the driveway to the front door.
Okay.
Those are the only other lights on the exterior of the buildings.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So basically, it's the light you see on any.
So basically it's the light you see on any street that's been around in town.
Other questions? Okay, I, I think we're.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, have, have, um, has anybody looked at, um, bylaw? I think we have a dark skies bylaw for, um, making sure that we direct all light down. I know I said on it, but I thought that was passed, um.
Yeah, so the, these fixtures are dark sky compliant. So that is, you know, the, the idea that there's no light pollution that will be directed up with the light, with the, with this particular fixture.
I think, um, I just, I just hadn't heard any many.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, Jill, you want to move on?
Yep, Carol, you can stop sharing.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to start cheering again. If I could. Can you see my screen again now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. So basically what we had done was we thought it would be important to actually show you some photographs of, of various sites and, and projects that, um, you know, Larry has completed through his other affiliated companies, I mean, obviously you're familiar with Canterbury Brook. Um, and, and then here are just some other projects that Larry has been responsible for. Um, the reason why these are kind of, um, compelling and important are these also required, um, blasting and ledge removal. And you can see that in a couple of the photographs. Um, we just offered them to give you an understanding of, of how the, the properties are different, how the architectural features are, are, um, I guess diverse, um, and that was the purpose of the, of the photographs to kind of support the architectural presentation. Um, and the, the, the look of the project, because you can see where all of the landscaping is, the intent is to keep things um, as natural as we possibly can. Um, and, and obviously the project that you'd seen with regard to Chabaco Hill has much less, um, grassed areas. Um, and you know, we pulled that in tight intentionally. Um, and I, I had the phasing plans again, but I don't know if anybody has any questions about those, but that truly, the intent of tonight was to try and have a hard stop at eight o'clock. So we really did try to, um, be very surgical, if you will, about our presentation and to provide the board with the information and is, um, direct the manner as we could, so if the board has questions, if the public has questions, um, relative to landscaping, relative to, you know, the architecture, relative to the, the lighting, um, we would welcome them.
I think we did a good job so far.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Is this the time?
Sure, go ahead.
For the public.
Okay, first of all, I think I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Tom Headigan from Ransom to begin.
Hi, good evening, I was just wondering if I could share my screen for a couple of minutes?
Yeah, let me just get out one second, Tom, there you go.
Thanks.
All yours.
Yep, I just wanted to go back to, um, some of the landscaping, um, quickly.
Excuse me, who are you, Tom?
Sorry, I'm Tom Headigan with Ransom Consulting with, uh, Safe Chabaco.
Okay, thank you.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Get some stuff out of the way, so I just, um, early on in, um, this, these comments really go towards sort of the, um, the visual appearance of the subdivision of the neighborhood, going back to probably one of the first one or two meetings that we had. I think the, uh, the board had requested a three D, um, three D kind of model of the, of the, uh, development to understand the different, um, different views and, um, and one point we had gotten this, um, this sort of computer rendering, um, the, from Mr. Files company. Which showed, which showed the entrance and you could see the, the different buildings and how there's steps going up the road. Um, this was from the previous version, you know, the previous entrance with the buildings up on the road, which has since been, um, it's since been updated, so. Um, I don't think we've seen any revisions to the, um, revisions to how the neighborhood looks from the road until we got this artist. Um, rendering, um, in the most recent package, um, but this was, you know, not really an engineered drawing and did to really clearly show how things will really look. And, um, I just want to kind of point out a couple of things, if, if this is sort of the representation that, that, um, the board is going to judge how the development looks from the street. Um, this is, this is the landscaping plan, so I just took roughly, um, showing here sort of the viewscape that's taken from that, uh, from that artist's rendering, as you can see, it's going to take it from across the street through the entrance, you can see the first, the first two units here in that drawing, so if you can see unit one on the right, you can see the rooftop and unit thirty-two here on the left and, and the rest, the rest of it is really, you know, blushing green. But in, in reality, I don't think you can see this text, I apologize, doesn't come up very well, but so you have, you know, the first unit here, unit thirty-four, and if, if you look as the road goes up, unit thirty-two and thirty-three that are behind it, the floor eleva, the finished first floor elevation is seven feet higher. Um, is seven feet higher than unit thirty-four, so this is, this is just by approximation where that roof line would be. And similarly, you know, one, unit two and three behind it, um, is the finished floor is about eleven feet higher. So you know, here's a, you know, just relative to the size of the building, you know, where the roof line would be for that. So based on the amount of trees that are between those buildings, I think, I don't think it's reasonable to expect that you will not be able to see the next of, the next set of houses as you look up the, up the roads, so I think it may be a little bit of an overestimation in how, how green, um, things will be. And the other thing, just, just to the point of sort of accuracy, if you look at the grading plan, the top elevation, um, of that vertical rock face is elevation eighty-two. The first floor elevation of the, this first building right here, the finished floor elevation is eighty-four. Which means in reality, the finished floor of that building is up higher than the top of that rock face, which would bring, obviously bring the roof line up even higher. Um, the rendering gives you the sense that that building is sort of nestled down in there and you can only see the rooftop, or in reality, I think, visually it'd be, it'd be a lot higher, so, um, those are, those kind of extended my comments, I think, you know, from the beginning, uh, I think the board was looking for sort of a computer generated model to really show what the views will look like, and I think this latest drawing is, is kind of oversells, you know, how, how green and how secluded the neighborhood would be, so.
I think.
I have a question, if you estimated the eye level of this camera, what would you say the elevation is?
I'm not sure what it is, I mean, I would say it's, I mean, it's over, it's got to be over, it's more, I think it's higher than eye level from the road elevation.
It is.
It would be about eighty-two feet, I would say, um, which, if we lowered it down to the five foot three, all of the canopies would cover all of the roofs, so. I think this is splitting between what you're describing and what was being shown.
Right, but we definitely didn't want to show that view, we wanted to be able to demonstrate this because in fairness, um, we wanted you to have that eye view. Um, and relative to, you know, the computer generated aspect, if everybody will remember, we did say that we were going to provide the artist's, um, rendering and not the computer generated. Um, and, and that was something that we had discussed with the board members and, and so that's why we provided this particular view. But thank you very, very much, Mr. Bolo, and, um, thank you for the comments, Mr. Hennigan.
That's all I had on this, I think, uh, John Cole has an additional, uh, related comments as well.
Sure.
I will stop sharing.
Okay, let me share the screen quick. This will look familiar, um. So, um, uh, I'm, I'm John Cole, thanks, Tom. Um, we've been living on the Chabaco Road for thirty-two years and I'm a proud member of Safe Chabaco, those that don't know. Um, in the, you know, we, we've all seen this, this rendering that I'm showing you, um, of the road. So I don't mean to be repetitive, I'll try to jump through this, um, pretty well, um, with these illustrations. And, and Jill actually mentioned that, you know, we talk about this being, you know, fifty years down the road or whatever, I mean, I don't know if it's fifty years, uh, that's not my, my expertise, but I do know that this is a very verdant picture. And there's only a hundred and sixty-nine trees getting planted in there. Um, and as, as Tom just pointed out, you don't see any of the buildings, you don't see any of the roads. So it's, it's tough to kind of understand, um, what we're supposed to be looking at and what we're supposed to be understanding because there's no kind of sense of reality, um, in these, in these pictures. Um, and then we have this entranceway, and again, here we have this big, um, beach, which is, um, you know, a fairly mature tree. And yet with the, with the, uh, the, the service roads that are being built, um, the two service roads, this will all be flattened um, along here, so, um, you know, there, there won't be any new, you know, any re-trees retained along there. Um, matter of fact, where that tree is, there's a, about a hundred and twenty-five foot, um, two-hundred-year-old white pine right now. Um, so none of that's preserved, so none of this character that we've been promised about saving and protecting the road is going to be there, it's all going to be reinstalled after, um, the land and, and everything has been disassembled. Um, so, um, I just wanted to, to, to kind of point that out, that we're not looking at, at reality. And I just want to touch base with one bit of fact, because we get concerned about that, is that this, what we're looking at right now is Canterbury Brook, um, this morning. This is what the developers' properties look like. And you can see the tiny bit of tree growth, um, that is on the property. Um, it's not planted, it's, it's very, you know, this is it, this is what the reality is of what these projects look like. And I think it, we, it was asked for by the board originally, it was asked for by us. It's been talked about a lot to have a full three D set of renderings of what this property looks like because it's so complex. With all the land around it, there's, I don't know how anybody can make a decision looking at these cartoons. I think we need to have the facts and, and hard evidence to, to do that. Um, and with that, I'd like to pass this on to Deborah Ellison. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, um, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, Sixth Street, Middle Street in Gloucester, um, representing Safe Chabaco. I would just like to remind the board about the senior housing bylaw that is, that they need to take into consideration when looking at the landscaping and the housing design. Um, with regard to landscaping, the bylaws require minimal disturbance to the site, that's eight point two point thirteen subsection two. And to maintain the site in its natural state. And it requires setbacks and landscape buffers that shall remain vegetated and undisturbed. The landscape plan makes it clear that none of that is happening. Um, the entire development is being, development area is being clear cut and stripped of trees. And we have no indication why they haven't looked at alternative approaches, for example, limited tree removal, grading through soil addition versus rock removal, limited foundation blasting, working with the natural topography instead of, uh, decimating it. And they're required to do this under eight point two point twenty. Soil erosion shall be minimized by integrating the development into the existing terrain and reasonably retaining the natural grades and soil covers. And the developer will tell you they've done that, they've preserved most of the site and therefore they've met those requirements, but that's not, simply not the case. These requirements cover all portions of the property, including the development area. They are, have not integrated the development, excuse me, into the existing terrain. The bylaw speaks to, directly to that in the development area. They are using every last bit of developable area right up to the edge of the buffer zone. And Ms. Mann, as she said tonight, the entire development area is being blasted. She said it'll be blasted everywhere, this isn't the intent of this bylaw. So although the developer told you that they were preserving vegetation along Chabaco Road, the landscape plan shows otherwise. They've moved the houses back, but all that vegetation between Chabaco Road and those houses is going to be removed. And there'll be some replanting, but it certainly isn't going to take the place of what's there now. Um, we were originally told, you were told, and the conservation commission was told, that the construction entry was going to be the development entry. And now we have three access roads, so they're going to clear cut a much larger swath, uh, along Chabaco Road. And, excuse me, they're removing trees that, uh, many of which are over a hundred years old and are placing them with trees that are twelve to fourteen feet high. And many of those trees will not mature during the lifetimes of some of the current residents on this street. It's not consistent with minimal disturbance or landscape buffers, and it's not consistent with what the public understood to be happening when those houses were moved back. One of the required findings for a special permit is that you provide visual and noise buffering of the development to minimize impact to the abutting properties. That's eight point two point thirty-one section, subsection five. Again, I would tell you that hasn't been done and you cannot make that finding. The only way to do that would be into implement some sort of no cut zone along Chabaco Road to provide the necessary buffer and the noise buffer. With regard to the housing design, the project also fears, fails to give you a variety of housing that is moderately priced or affordable. It's largely homogeneous luxury, high-dense development of fifty units. Forty-four labeled average, they are two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet. Four are labeled medium at seventeen hundred square feet. And two are labeled small at fifteen hundred square feet. So you have six units that are less than two thousand square feet. That's really not a variety of houses. You have, we've been told that units in the range of two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet have a price point of approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. That's eighty-eight percent of the units will be priced at or above eight hundred thousand dollars, it's hardly affordable or moderately priced. And the planning board can require a more honest range of building types and prices by requiring more small and medium houses, more, a more variety of units. Finally, the housing design, um, it's very densely constructed, it's directly incompatible with the rural residential neighborhood that it's going to become a part of. Now there are approximately thirty homes in that neighborhood and this project would be almost two hundred percent more. With regard to the special permit requirements under ten point five point two, you have to weigh the adverse impacts against the beneficial um, impacts for the town or the neighborhood. And we know there are a lot of adverse impacts, we've been talking about those for months. And the only beneficial impact we've heard about is financial. But we don't have any direct proof that this is actually going to bring, bring a significant financial, um, windfall to the town. It doesn't consider the impact on the municipal water supply, whether a new water supply is going to be needed. Doesn't, um, talk about the greater need, potential need for emergency services. Uh, greater need for police services if you have a lot of people who aren't living here all winter. So I think you need to consider all of these bylaws when you're looking at the landscape plan, looking at the housing and the variety of housing, the lack of variety of housing. And when you make these types of decisions, so thank you very much for your time tonight.
So I, if I may, Mr. Mitchell, I would like to respond because does the opposition want us to have a dense development or they want us to have a sprawling development? Do they want us to take up more space, do they want us to take up less space? The whole intent and purpose of the senior housing bylaw is to develop cluster housing. This particular subdivision has a set, a specific way in which to develop base density. I mean, I, I, this completely follows the bylaw with regard to, you know, the open, the access along Essex Street. If they prefer, we could come in off of, you know, Essex Street and Chabaco and connect the roads, nobody wants to do that. There's plenty of developable area that we're not utilizing, I mean, I, I understand that the, that the, you know, the, the people in this neighborhood don't want it. They want what they have and they don't want change, I, I, I understand that, that's not an uncommon thing, I hear it all the time. I understand that. That's not an uncommon thing. I hear it all the time. But this particular project does bring many benefits to the town of Hamilton. Number one, it's the landowner's right to develop their property. You know, I understand that this is a special permit and this board has discretion to evaluate all of those aspects. But what this does do is it does bring a tremendous, tremendous economic windfall to the town. Two-point-one-seven million dollars to your affordable housing fund is not insignificant. A seven-hundred-thousand-dollar-a-year contribution to your budget is not insignificant. I served on the finance committee in my town for seventeen years. And I can assure you that senior housing developments are a tremendous benefit to the community because your town has a budget that sixty-one percent of which goes to your schools. There is no drain. There's no creation of any children from this development. So of course you have a tremendous benefit with regard to an increased amount of, you know, special services. This is not an assisted living facility. I understand that it's a fifty-five and older. I understand that it's meant for people, quite frankly, like me, like most of the people on this call. We are the people who occupy fifty-five and elders. It is not a Brooksby Farm. It is not an assisted living facility. It is, it is going to be a project that this board has helped to shape. And with regard to showing pictures of Canterbury Brook, that was approved by the board. Those particular plantings were approved. This is a totally, completely and separate project. It has different landscaping. And by the way, we meet the buffer requirements. We meet the landscape requirements. I'm not going to go back through the landscaping plan and show you, but it's a very small area on Tobacco Road that's even going to be disturbed. We keep in place and tightened it on purpose. We designed it intentionally to provide people who pass by with a better viewscape. The interior elements of the project also will be well landscaped, but will not be visible to anyone in the public, no, no one. And with regard to the fact that we are doing a cluster development, I would, I would suggest strongly that the opposition go back and read the master plan and actually go back and read the senior housing and then go back and read when it was approved. The intent and the purpose is to create less sprawl, bring it together, bring it in, concentrate. And that's what we've done. That's the point.
Okay, good. I just don't want to get into a debate of.
I'm not. I just felt as though I had something. And I apologize, but we are done with our presentation and I do appreciate the views of the opposition. And I think that many times they are, if they're constructive, they allow us to better the project.
Good. No, thank you.
I can just mention.
No, no, I can't. No, actually, I don't want to get into a debate here. This was about photometrics. This was about landscaping. I don't want to devolve into a discussion about what the senior housing bylaw means or intends. That's not the subject area for tonight. Deborah, you had your piece. Jill had her piece. Unless they're specific to the lighting or landscaping, then I think we need to move on. Agreed. All right, good. Well, thank you, everybody. That was very helpful. And so Patrick? Is there anything else we need to cover as it relates to one thirty-three Essex?
The next item I think that we probably need to talk about is what our next meeting should consist of.
Okay, good idea.
We have that in agreement.
So if it pleases the board, and I think this is something that was touched on by each of the members who spoke, we would love to be able to walk through the site plan and the master development plan. And I think then we can really show you the variance with regard to the smaller units, the moderate units, and how they vary. And Brent Cole will be available for your next meeting if that works for this board.
Jill, are you thinking that's going to take up the entire meeting?
I don't believe it will. What we could do is, I mean, whatever pleases the board. Because I do understand that this project has become a little tedious and it ends up with the board having a four-hour meeting. And I appreciate each of you coming out because you're volunteers. And I know the amount of work it takes to come here and sit here. So if the board would like to simply have an abbreviated meeting to be able to just present that, we're more than willing to do that. And at the next hearing, perhaps, you know, we can go over those specific items relative to your rubric that was developed by this board and then address all of the findings. Perhaps that is the best thing to do. Again, I defer to the board.
So I just want to be clear. At some point, we were going to be talking about, I thought, additional, and maybe I'm wrong, these construction plan? So is that what, that's what you're planning on doing in the next meeting?
Exactly, the construction plan. And that's what we use the site layout. Yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I think that's actually going to be pretty involved and there's probably going to be a lot of questions. And also, I think there were leftover questions from our last three-hour and forty-five-minute session that you didn't get to. Specifically, my questions.
I don't, which were they?
They were, it was about the number of trips.
Oh, the construction management plan. Is that correct? And so I have very good news for you about that, and I'm not going to talk about it now because I don't want to overburden you, but yes.
I just want to make sure that in the construction management plan, you get back to the questions.
A hundred percent. The number of trips, the number.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The SWIP will be addressed. You know, we'll even show you how we're getting in to do the construction access. That's what you mean too, right, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have all that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's good unless members have other things they want to discuss relating to that.
There's something any of the members would like me to address, please let me know. And even if you emailed me, I'll add it and give you responses and bring, you know, whatever materials I can to make sure you get your answers.
Well, that's a, that's a good question. So if members, if you have any specific questions you want answered, this is the time to speak up. Okay, I don't hear anything, so I think that's it. So I think we need to take a vote to continue the hearing. To Patrick, what's the next date?
The next date is April twenty-first. Let me remind folks that that is actually a Thursday evening. We're having to do that because there is a state holiday that, earlier that week.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing on one thirty-three Essex to April twenty-first.
I move to continue the hearing on one thirty-three Essex till April, what was it, Rick?
Twenty-first.
April twenty-first.
A second.
A second date for seven PM over Zoom.
Yep, seven, seven PM Zoom. Thank you for adding that, Corey. So we have a, that's been secured. Any discussion? Oh, okay, we'll do a whole vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan, four, aye.
Corey?
Corey, W, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amal?
Amal Dahlquist, aye.
Marnie?
Marnie Crouch, aye.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye. I don't think I missed anybody, did I? Nope. Okay, so the meeting has continued till April twenty-first via Zoom at seven PM.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and good evening.
Thank you, board members, for your time and service. Good night.
So Patrick, do you want to pick up the agenda?
Very much.
Yeah, our next, well, we've already continued the storm management special permit hearing to April twenty-first also, correct?
As long as we, how long, extensive is that conversation going to be?
I am anticipating that conversation to be very short. The applicant has told me that he is expecting to withdraw his application for one Bridge Street.
Okay, that, that should make it pretty short.
Yep.
Okay, so next on the agenda for tonight?
Board business.
Okay, board business.
I'm sorry, Patrick, did you actually, did you still move to continue?
I didn't hear you, Robin.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
A little better.
Let me see if I can turn this off. Hold on. Sorry, I didn't, I heard discussion of continuing it. I didn't hear a motion to continue the stormwater farm.
Is there going to be any public comment tonight?
No, because we're not, it's not, we're not taking it up. It's being continued.
But I just recommend that you actually take a motion to continue.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So.
Could you explain to the public what you're doing then?
Yes, we're continuing, we're continuing the hearing until April twenty-first at seven PM via Zoom.
So we'll have an opportunity to talk about what we just saw tonight on, on April twenty-first?
What you saw tonight? I'm not sure I know what you're referring to.
The presentations that you made tonight. We'll be able to talk about those.
The present, well, we just talked about it.
The public didn't have an opportunity to ask any questions.
Actually, the public did have an opportunity. We had a couple of.
Save Tobacco, save Tobacco, ask questions. No, the public didn't.
Okay, so, all right, well, can we first deal with the stormwater Bridge Street to continue that? And then we'll try and answer your questions, although the applicant has signed off, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if there are members of the public who got missed on the last one, I think that you should be able to just accommodate their questions at the next meeting because the public hearing is still open. It's been continued around one thirty-three.
Sure, that's fine.
I'm just asking for some clarification about what the process is, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, no, I appreciate that. So if you have any simple questions, we might be able to answer those. But we really need to continue your questions to April twenty-first relative to one thirty-three Essex.
So we have until April twenty, April twenty-first. I thank you for that clarification. We will, I will have some, some questions on April twenty-first.
Good.
Because the applicant will be on the screen. The applicant's not there anymore.
Right.
And that's funny?
Sorry?
And that's funny?
No, I'm just, observation that the applicant isn't on the screen anymore. I'm not laughing at you. So as we said, you get April twenty-first, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. So as long as relates to the Bridge Street stormwater application, we need to continue that. So I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Make a motion that we continue the discussion on Bridge Street till April twenty-first, to the meeting on April twenty-first.
Thank you, Bill.
And again, just at seven PM by Zoom.
At seven PM by Zoom. We have the motion made. It's second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a vote. Richard?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Amal?
Amal Dahlquist, aye.
William? Or Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Bor, aye.
Corey?
Corey Bowley, aye.
And Rick, oh, I'm sorry, Marnie, did I catch you?
No, you didn't. Marnie Crouch, aye.
And Rick Mitchell, aye. Okay, so that's continued till twenty-first at seven AM via Zoom. Patrick, Refit?
So we're all aware that our next meeting is on the twenty-first. Just looking ahead, in May, our two meetings are on the third and the seventeenth. Let's see. The next item that we needed to discuss is the board with the possibility of a, an associate member. In this instance, because the election takes place next Thursday, we will be absent Corey as a full member. But he has offered to continue to assist the board as a voting member and being an associate member after that election to assist the board in addressing permitting that's before the board currently. Did I say that right, Rick and Robin?
As far as I can say, yes. And I think that the reason here is because there is only one person running, and I think it's Beth. Her, assuming she is successful in her quest for a seat on the board, she will not be able to vote. So that means we would be down to six. Although Pat could join in as the associate and stand in. But we run into a bit of a potential problem. It is not a problem yet. But four of the members, Amal, Corey, who won't be on, Bill Wheaton, and Pat Norton all have missed one meeting, eating. And using the Mullen rule, they have been able to continue their participation in this. But if any one of those people miss another meeting, then we lose, we're down further. So in order to try and continue continuity and consistency with the people that have been involved in this for at least ten months, that was to have Corey as an associate who could continue his participation to finish this.
So Patrick, we could allow Patrick to vote or to continue instead of the new person who doesn't, who is going to have to bow out and allow Corey to take the place of Patrick temporarily. As, Patrick, what's your actual title? It's not associate. Is it associate?
Still associate, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so, but that would just be.
They would be, actually.
For the purposes of continuing business that's already started. After that, Beth can take over.
Right, so, right, they would actually technically be both, they would be both associates.
They would be both associates. And we give the priority to Pat, Patrick and Corey if we needed him because somebody else had to bow out.
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't, I don't either. I think that's within the protocol of the board, yeah.
Any questions or concerns by other board members?
I have to agree with Bill Wheaton on that. I think Pat Norton is an associate member and he should be given the opportunity to vote. He's made, I think, a real significant contribution to the board, not only because of his excellent technical capabilities, but also I observed that he's asked very piercing questions at times. And I appreciate his knowledge on that. So I think in terms of the ultimate vote, unless there is some problem with other members who have already missed a meeting, missing another meeting, he should be given the priority in terms of the vote on the special permit. And then only in the event that, that Corey's vote would be needed, would he be given the vote.
Yep, that's fine. So, so Pat, you can't miss another meeting.
And I also just can't ask questions with no level of response. It was kind of nice not having a responsibility other than helping out Pat Refit.
Yeah, and Corey, you're, Corey, you're okay with that?
It certainly downplays my extension quite a bit to be rather insignificant in case of someone else's absence after two. in case of someone else's absent after two years of service, but the offer still stands.
Uh, appreciate it. Thank you. Um, all right, so.
I just, let me just, uh, add something, um, Mr. Chairman. I, I would agree with that too, if that is the arrangement. That, uh, Pat Norton would be the person to vote in this case. It, it is the right procedure. And given the contentiousness of this project, uh, we probably almost have to anticipate there's going to be some follow up on whatever the vote count is. So if we vary too much from the standard procedure, I think that would not help the planning board or Hamilton. So I'd support that last position.
Yeah.
I support it as well.
Yeah, my question.
Good. So in order to, uh, make this happen, we, the board had, needs to vote to recommend, um, that Corey be appointed an associate. Uh, that goes to the, um, Board of Selectmen and then the Board of Selectmen, uh, review that and then we'll vote on it. So, and we hope to have that happening at their next Monday meeting so that we have a full complement of associates and members at our next meeting on the twenty.
I don't think we need a motion to have Corey.
Yeah, we actually do. We have to vote.
Corey vote, we have to, we've, we have to.
Yes, yes, we have to, yeah, he's, we have to nominate him and then vote to afford his nomination, uh, to the Board of Selectmen. So I will entertain a motion to.
But it's not a nomination to fill out a remaining term. It's a nomination.
No, no, it's to appoint him as an associate.
Okay.
So, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, nominate and approve nomination of Corey Blue as an, uh, associate to the planning board.
I make a motion to nominate Corey Bullier for an associate position.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Bill Wheaton?
Bill Wheaton, I.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, I.
Amal?
Amal Dalquist, I.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
Now, Corey, I could ask you since you are a voting number. Okay, and Rick Mitchell, I. So, um, your, you, your name will be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen requesting you to be, uh, appointed as an associate. Continue, and the assumption is that we'll continue until we end the, the hearing on one thirty six. Hopefully, hopefully by the end of June, no later than.
That would be nice. Um, I only wonder is, is my email active for that period of time or?
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely.
We'll, we'll make sure that that continues to, uh, be functional for you.
Oh, no, you're gonna, your house is going to be staked out and you can run, but you can't hide. Okay, um, Patrick, what else?
Unless there are reports by others, uh, I will mention that the, uh, first Z B A public hearing on the four twenty one Asbury Street forty B project, uh, takes place tomorrow evening. Uh, I believe that'll, uh, that meeting will start at seven P M. It will be on Zoom.
All right, very good. So unless people have anything else to discuss, maybe we can adjourn at a decent hour this time.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Mitchell, can I just make one comment here?
Sure.
I just want to introduce something into the, uh, into the record. Uh, just in in clear view of the fifteenth, the meeting on that particular day, I got just four sentences I'd like to read into the record.
The fifteenth?
March fifteenth.
Oh, okay, got it.
And it centers around trust and I, what I wrote was, trust allows this planning board to be effective. However, recent meetings have exposed cracks in that trust from within and without. Internal distrust is caused by patterns of procedural surprises, surprises and suspension of board discussions. External distrust is evidenced by substantial critical commentary. Further erosion of trust will undermine this planning board and place the town in a more precarious position in defending its decisions unless we acknowledge the problem and change it in the near future. Uh, I, I don't offer this for any discussion. I'm just introducing that into the record.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the table to, uh, adjourn. And I think we started a roll call vote. Uh, Bill, you did vote, I think.
I made the bottom motion. We had a second and I vote in favor of adjournment.
Okay, very good. Um, and Corey?
Corey Bull, you, I.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Poor, I.
Amal?
Amal Dalquist, I.
Barney?
Barney Crouch, I.
Richard?
Richard Boroff, I.
And Rick Mitchell, I. All right, thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Okay, good night, everybody.